Anything good on chat? Okay terrific. Good evening everyone, welcome to the January 8th, 2009 school board meeting, first meeting of the year. Happy New Year everyone. Sean would you mind helping us begin with the...
(inaudible).
Thanks Sean. I'll continue by reading our mission statement. "The New Market School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity in response to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society." Again, welcome everyone. This would be the time period if we had folks who would like to make comments, this would be the time to do so. Having none, I guess we will proceed to the minutes from our last meeting, December 18th.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 18th meeting.
Thank you Linda.
I'll second that.
Thanks Jill. And noted is that Mr. Chwoski was absent that evening, so that will be an abstention there. So are there any comments on the minutes? Forrest?
I have, I do have one.
Go ahead.
Okay. I had one to thank the, what's the woman's name that's doing the minutes?
Erica.
Erica. Thank her for taking that position because it's such an important one. There are just a couple of small friendly...
Okay.
Under committee reports, there was, it says Chairperson Chase, which I guess is your new title. Noted the school is working with SCS, I think it's SES.
Mm-hmm.
And then further down that page actually, I just wanted to clarify, when I was talking, it said Jillbury suggested the school board discuss this further in February. I don't know if this is really clear as to what I was, I just want to be clear because we're talking about meeting with the town council. I think I'd like to, that this to be changed to school renovation slash expansion. We had said, once we have a plan for what we want to do with the school, then it would be a good idea to meet with the town council, and I don't think that came across in the way that it's written.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the page after that...
Which page is that?
Page six, under the superintendent's report, I think just the word principal should be P-A-L.
Mm-hmm.
I think we caught that one. And then I did have one other comment back on page three, under Article Four. The way it came across to me was that we had a discussion about Article Four with the Maintenance and Repair Reserve Fund, and that the way it came across here, sounds like Forrest made a suggestion, and then we all said, yeah, well we don't, whatever, we're going to say no. It didn't sound like there was any discussion in this part. It kind of sounded like Forrest said something, I said something about a roof that wasn't, I don't even think, true. But I think my point is that over when we were discussing Article One, Mark LaRoche had said that he agreed that, you know, with the facilities aging more, we were concerned about keeping the reserve for the maintenance repair, and I don't think that point got addressed under Article Four even though it was discussed. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
I'm missing a couple hours of sleep from last night, so I'm not sure if I'm being clear.
No, it makes sense.
But I don't think it looked like there was a reasonable, I think there was a discussion. Forrest had his point, and there was a point that we were concerned about having enough money in the Maintenance Repair Reserve, and I don't think that point was caught in the words here.
Okay. We will have a tape available for Erica, so in addition to the tape, I will review this with her.
And that's all I have.
So do we want it, okay, go ahead.
I just noticed that Nancy Pagnotta is spelled incorrectly. N-O-T-A, a couple of times. Just a minor one. And then one other item, under my report, it says the cost for installation, it should be the reimbursement.
Which page were you answering?
I'm on page four, under, when we talked about the elevator and the $85,000, it should be the reimbursement, not the cost.
I guess, it sounds like you've got some significant edits to make on Article Four.
We'll bring them and revise them.
Okay, so we'll, I guess then table these minutes and then address them.
Correct.
Because it sounds like, if there were just a couple of spelling changes and whatnot, but we've got some lack of language.
I don't know if anyone agrees with me, I just think it, I don't think the discussion that happened is what was captured here. It almost sounds very disconnected with the way that the sentences are included, and I just don't think that's the way that discussion flowed, so I don't feel comfortable with it, that's all.
Well, this has been a good first attempt by Erica at a board meeting. There is a learning curve, we'll help her with that. What I would suggest, and it'll be helpful, in addition to what we've gone over this evening, if you have any other issues where we can make modification, I would appreciate if you could email that to me, so when I review this with Erica.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess the best way to proceed is to, rather than to vote against the minutes, that maybe if you consider retracting your motion to approve the minutes?
I will retract mine.
Okay. Thank you. And yes, it's wonderful that Erica was willing to step up to that role, so it's, her efforts are much appreciated.
And I do like that she bolded the headings and the names, that really helps to the flow of reading it a lot.
Great. Okay.
How about the non-public?
Oh, sorry.
I make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes from the December 18th meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion regarding those non-public minutes from the 18th?
And I won't be voting.
Thank you, chat. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. The school calendar, we had some discussions about that prior.
We did.
There was some outstanding questions regarding a half day, was it?
Yes, early release. We, at the meeting where this was presented for your review, we stated that we are aligned with Seacoast School of Technology in Exeter, and I had indicated after the discussion related to the early release the day before the holiday break, that as long as the Seacoast School of Technology did not differ, that I would recommend that we have the early release date, and I am doing so. And that's included in this revision.
Okay. Are there any thoughts or comments on that piece, or any other regarding the calendar?
I just have a question. Just from my own information, I noticed that there are six and a half days worth of teacher workshop, but some of them are half day and some are full day. I know, I'm just wondering, I'm sure this is common and it's been happening for quite a few years, but what's the movement from, we used to have whole day teacher workshops, and now there's more half days, and I'm wondering if that because it works better for, you know, parents with trying to arrange, you know, after-school care, or is it that the teachers have, you know, curriculum meetings or small, you know, more focused meetings that they use at that time in the afternoon? How does that?
Yeah, there's a whole lot of different philosophies on this. Some feel that sustained period of time is more productive, others feel that, you know, half the day with a fatigue factor setting in, having attended a workshop, is a negative influence. So, based on not only past practice, but what seems to be working in this district, we decided to remain with the status quo. And we do have a couple of teachers, Greg, you want to speak to this as well, from your perspective as a teacher, how these half days been working?
The half days can work very well. One of the difficulties can be if it's in a Wednesday, middle of the week, you almost end up having two Mondays with kids. I mean, that's just something that, you get the kids going and getting them in a direction, and then we have a half day or a full day in the middle of the week, it becomes a little bit difficult, because then it comes Thursday and it's like Monday all over again.
Yep. And we tried to make that.
They both can work well, depending on the nature of the workshops being presented. We just had a full day workshop, and a bunch of us took first aid and CPI, and that worked incredibly well, being divided that way. Some other sessions, a half day is long enough.
And with that in mind, and suggestions from administrators, principals, and staff, we made an attempt to modify the scheduling of workshop days from that Wednesday rotation, and have some Monday-Friday experience as well. So in that vein, I do believe that's an improvement.
Any other thoughts or questions on the calendar?
Just one in.
I'm sorry.
Definitely. Just so I can, okay, Mark, you said recommending the 12:23 to be the half day, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you're hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. In that event, I'd entertain a motion to approve the calendar for the 2009-2010 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve this New Market School District calendar for the 2009-2010 school year.
Thanks Jill.
Second that.
Thank you Linda. Any final words on that then? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a good discussion, it was a good opportunity to have staff represented last week, the last meeting, to share their concerns too.
Yeah, I think so as well.
Okay. We are fortunate this evening to have David Clark, who's a computer data manager, works in the junior senior high school in several capacities, and to talk to us about what's going on, I guess. I'll leave it very open.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Well, thank you for inviting me. It was nice to come, and I spent some time on that side of the board in Chester, and I realized that it's not an easy job. I put in a ton of hours, and there's always that, I was trying to reach a balance between what the taxpayers could afford and how we can get the best achievement out of the students, and that's a tough balance to always make. And I figured that I was good at it because everybody was mad at me, so the people that wanted to spend more money than people that wanted to spend less. Yeah, so I reached that happy balance, but I do appreciate the work that you guys do. I thought, just to help illustrate some of the things that we're doing, I have some handouts, and I don't think, let me hold on to one, but I don't know if I have it, maybe you can share some of them. I wanted to say, first of all, my wife sometimes accuses me of being the glass-half-empty person, and the staff at the high school, junior high school, sometimes accuses me now of being the glass-half-full person, and I think it's easy to do because the staff is extremely supportive there, and it's a cohesive unit, it makes it easy to make some initiatives in the area of technology, because there isn't the infighting or anything else. People are very happy to work together, and they're very happy to engage in new ideas, new techniques, new methodology, so I think I've been blessed to be able to come here.
If I could interrupt you just a moment, if you could stand at the lectern there...
I'm sorry. It's a teacher's habit of running around the room, you know. Okay.
We can change you there if necessary.
Yeah, all right. So I think that, first of all, you know, as board members, you want to know that your money's being spent well, and that you're getting something for those dollars. All the taxpayers in town want to know that. And I think that, in my short experience at the junior high high school, that we're doing a lot of things that are very positive, that I'm excited about, and that are moving the school in the right direction. And I can't help but remember, there was an article written a long time ago about the guy that talks about Rip Van Winkle, and he wakes after so many years of sleeping, and they take him around, so it could be 2009, they take him around, wow, there's airplanes, there's television, and there's the internet, and all of these other things, and they take him into a room, and he looks at the room and says, oh, I remember this place, this is a classroom, there's a blackboard there, and the students are all in rows. And I think that that was the model for a long time, and we're starting to break that model, and some of the things that we're doing to break that, I'll give you some examples. If you look at, say, the first page of the handout, I just happened to take a screenshot of one of Kristin Kiefer's physics classes. She uses, as well as I and a number of other teachers there, we use a product called Moodle, and I don't know, how many of you have had any exposure to Moodle? Okay, and you've seen it. And I think this is one of the technologies, I'm not a fan across the board of free software, but here's one case where there's a piece of free software that actually works really well for me as a teacher, and I think works well for a number of other teachers there. What Moodle is, is a way to give lessons and exercises, assignments to students, and do it in a paperless way. Now, obviously, you need computers to do that, but students who even are not in school for a day, they're out sick, they can interact with their teacher, they can interact with their class, they can get their lessons, they can do their assignments and not get behind, because this is all an electronic medium. So if you look, one of the nice things here, and we talk about what do teachers face, and I spent most of my career outside of teaching, I've only been teaching for the last six years, so I did a lot of other things, and I found, when I got into teaching, that the biggest opponent that you had, the thing that you had to fight the most was a lack of time. You had to be preparing lessons, you had a lot of paperwork to do, you created copies of worksheets and all these sort of things, and a lot of that time was spent in repetitive tasks that you, clerical work. And with a tool like Moodle, you create your lessons, you can reuse. I've got different students each quarter, I've created lessons for a quarter, I can use the same lessons, so I've got some consistency, obviously I'm going to move them around a little bit, but I've got consistency from one quarter to the next, I know that I'm teaching the right things. Each of these lessons can be correlated to the curriculum. I know that the skills that I want my students to have are the skills that I'm teaching them, and I can see their performance, their assessment is going to be there. So it's a nice tool to save me time, it also documents the fact that I'm teaching the right thing, and the kids like it. When my kids go into my class and I see the same thing with Kristin, I see the same thing with Mark Levitt, they come into the class, they log onto the computer, and they get right to work. And the thing that you do most of, and I see it with Kristin and the other teachers that are using it, you're the coach, the kids are learning on their own, and that's one of the skills that we talk about, we want to teach the kids how to think for themselves. We want them to be independent. When they go to college, they're going to be interacting with computer systems, no matter where they go. If they're going to, I just took my son's truck in to get it repaired, the guy went out with a little device there, plugged it in, he looked at the error code, and he knew what was wrong with the truck. Everybody that comes out and needs to be prepared to use those skills, so we know that we're teaching the right skills, and we can document it, we can assess it. One of the things also that's coming up, and this is a state mandate, we have to have portfolios for the kids so that we know that they know how to use computer technology in different ways, and we have to grab examples of the technology that they've used, and they create a little portfolio. If you look just on the front page, and I'm tempted to walk away from the microphone there, in the right upper corner there, it says my portfolio, the kids, from their assignments on Moodle, can create their own portfolio. So it's not a matter where, okay, let's print out a piece of work, let's get a paper folder, let's put it in the paper folder, they can create those folders electronically, teacher can pick out things. And for review, when you want to see, has the kid demonstrated a particular skill, proficiency, you can see it all electronically, so it works really nicely. In the main section of this Moodle page, where the assignments get created, and the kids will see a page that's very similar to this when they log in, they go right to the assignment, you can put other material there, they can blog, one of the things you can do is a Wiki, and I don't know how many people are familiar with a Wiki.
No.
Okay. Wiki is a tool that's very good for foreign languages, very good for English, where kids collaborate on a writing project. And I've got kids, and I know every time they get a joint project, you know, it's two or more kids have to collaborate and do a lab, or they do a writing project, there's always one kid that doesn't do the work, and, you know, the other kids complain about it. With a Wiki, they contribute to create a document, and everything is documented in that space, so you know who did the work, who made the corrections to the work, and then you get a better result out of the end. Lena Lee, who teaches Spanish over at the University of New Hampshire, has done studies, and she measured kids that were just writing without using a Wiki versus using the Wiki, and she showed that the kids became much more proficient in their writing, they contributed as a group, because they knew they were going to be all assessed, worked out really well. That's one example. The other thing we set up, as a result of an administrator's meeting, is now the administrators in the district have their own blog, and they can contribute to the blog. For example, one of the presentations that was given to the board by Tom Pavlidis is now on the blog, so the administrators can share information like that. So there's a lot of capabilities. This also includes a complete grade book, so over the holiday vacation, I happen to do grading, so, but it was all electronic, my kids' assignments were all electronic, I didn't carry any papers home. So it's, I think, the right tool. What would hold us back from implementing this fully? More computers for the kids. And I say that's an easy thing to say, but I think it's going to be the direction that you want to go in. We are using all of the computers in the school now, I get different classes come into the lab, we have signups, they're also using the mobile lab, and I'm going along here, but perhaps, maybe you can turn to the last page, this is a color page, this is a template, and one of our math teachers, Steve Anderson, who is really brave, he will jump into anything, and he's really adopting the technology, he said, hey, you know, I want to do something with my algebra students, so he signed up, got the mobile lab, there's 15 laptops on a cart that get charged, and the kids had to create questions in the Jeopardy format. And before they could use the computer, they had to get their questions done, so they had to do the math first, they had to come up with the questions and the answers, and then once they did that and proved it to Steve, we handed out the laptops to each of the kids, and then using this template, they created their questions and their answers. Now, in all the Jeopardy programs, and this is just a PowerPoint program, it's an interactive PowerPoint thing, but the template is one that works really well, and the kids have a good time with it. Then the kids will play their own Jeopardy games and review for the test, which they love doing, they love playing games. Now, if they're learning at the same time, they don't know it, that's good. The other thing I was going to show you, I'm kind of jumping around a little bit here, but I did show an example of my eighth grade class, that's a Moodle page, and I like to use, I've got younger kids, I've got seventh and eighth graders, so I do, I don't know if you could see that, it's a page, it's got some characters on it. I didn't number the pages unfortunately, it says on the top, page one of three, and it's eighth grade computer literacy, second quarter. I apologize for that, I just threw it together here. You can impart a lot of information through that page, also, the other thing that I can do is, when I go through the assignment and the grading, I can create comments, and there's a dialogue that goes on between the student and the teacher, which I think is really important, because you can only just verbally say so much during the course of a class period, but whenever you assignment, has the opportunity for the teacher to make comments and say, hey, did you think about this? Take a look at, did you do a spell check? Did you check the grammar here? What about this answer? And you can get that dialogue going with the kids, and I think that is also important.
You're doing work with smart boards as well there.
Yeah, that's, let's go, I'll confuse you a little bit more. If you see this page here with the cells on it, I don't know if you can, I should have numbered these. This happens to be a smart board application, and a smart board, how many people have seen a smart board? You've seen it, so everybody's familiar with it, an interactive whiteboard. And what this does, and Linda Albright at our school does a miraculous job with this, and she is using it every day, and the other teachers are as well, I have one in my room, and what it allows them to do is really be interactive with the application. This just happens to be one that dealt with cells. Nice thing about this, and I talked about time, and time being critical to teachers, lessons like this, I pulled this lesson off of the internet, there is, there are teachers all over the country that contribute lessons to, you know, the smart webpage, and you can go back, same thing is true with Intel. I use a lot of Intel material, and Intel has spent a ton of money on teacher education, integrating technology into the classroom, and I teach a course in integrating technology that, I got the training free from Intel. So there's a lot of things out there, but the smart board is really something that, another one of those tools I wouldn't want to do without, I remember back, when I did my student teaching, we had the mimeograph machine, that was the height of technology, and having come back to teaching after 30-something years in the real world, I don't think I could have come back if I didn't have the technology to use, because that time factor is just so critical. To have to prepare lessons by paper and all of that would be next to impossible, and I think that if we're getting to the 21st century, and we don't want to have new teachers burn out in less than three years, which is the average, then we have to provide them with the tools that's going to allow them the time to prepare lessons, and really be enthusiastic and have a lot of fun with what they do. I have a ball every day, and I think the kids enjoy, I don't know if your son has made any comments back about the class, but I enjoy having the kids in the class, and they seem to enjoy it too. And you don't have to be the lecturer, you can be the coach, and I think that's important, because the kids are going to learn on their own, they're going to learn how to learn. I'll entertain a question, I kind of jumped around a little bit, I wasn't quite sure what you were interested in, but I think, in my opinion, there's a lot of good news about things that are happening up there, and I'm real happy to be here, and I'm happy that the teachers are embracing technology there, and I think everybody's excited about, you know, when they have the opportunity, if there were more computers around, they'd use them.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think you make a real good point. Aside from all the academic merit and the learning experience associated with the use of technology, attending orientation at a university when we enrolled our son, I was amazed that you cannot complete that process without proficient amazed that you cannot complete that process without proficiency in technology. The paper trail that used to exist when we went to school no longer exists. Communication with instructors, with food service, the financial aid office, textbooks are disappearing. The whole nature of the game is phenomenal. I think I would last three days. So, what you say is absolutely correct.
And one of the things, since dollars are short, and particularly in this environment, one of the things I've been thinking about is, you know, the value proposition. And you're going to spend dollars in different areas. One of the areas you spend a lot of money in, this is the first time I've made copies or printed anything in probably two months. And I've got classes that I teach. And I don't think every teacher could say that, because they don't have the technology that goes in front. So, toner costs money, paper costs money, copiers cost money. So, there are some trade-offs that you have, and I think there are some other efficiencies that can be gained through the use of technology. So, I would encourage that, maybe throw it back on us, we're the teacher. We can do some studying and figure out, okay, if we did this, what's the payback period? How can we get value out of the use of technology? Because using technology for technology's sake doesn't make any sense. But if we're providing a good product for the kids, and they're learning something, and we're also saving money in other areas, then I think it makes sense.
Absolutely.
Because I'm cheap.
Any questions?
I have a question. I don't know. This is wonderful, thank you. It's nice to hear what's going on in the schools with the different grade levels and the different classes. I'm just wondering, I know we had kind of put on hold, when we had to cut the budget back this year, some of the purchases of some more smartboards. How are they dispersed as far as the junior high versus the high school teachers? Is it pretty balanced? Do you find that, you know, maybe, are they accessible to both the junior high and senior high? Because I know some of them are getting kind of put into specific classrooms. So, how is that, and is there a need for, you know, more people looking for one to be specifically in their classroom, or just a little interest in that?
I think there, obviously, in me talking with the teachers and working with them on the smartboard, I think if every teacher could have one in their room, that would be great. I came from a school where there was one in virtually every room. Right now, they're distributed along department lines primarily. So, in some departments, there's more than one because of the added one, and, but I think that there's still, you know, this gap. I think the other thing, you know, it's hard to say which one comes to the top. I like the idea of perhaps investing more in mobile labs. When I was on the board in Chester, we bought a couple of mobile labs, and we got a lot of use out of that, because, you know, you put a laptop on every kid's desk, and you could do some of the things like Moodle and so forth. I think that one of the decisions that should be looked at as we look at investments in technology is standardizing on a particular interface or a particular software. And I grew up using the Smart brand, which has been around the longest time. And I know we invested in some other ones, and we can still use some of the Smart technology. But I think going forward, just like in any other software acquisition, we ought to standardize on one thing to make it easier for training with the teacher, so we don't say, okay, room two has this technology, and room three has this technology, and remember to do this when you're in this room, and that when you're in that room. Because that, once again, it impacts the time factor.
I think that's a very good point. And as we've explained throughout the budgeting process, certainly, there's always a need in some way, shape, or form for additional funding. But we're taking a timeout, and we want to hear from staff. We want to hear from users. What is working? What changes would you suggest? And how are we going to get there? So, we're anxious this year, all of us, to sit down, have those discussions, and frankly, try to determine where the infusion of dollars ultimately make the most sense from a student's perspective.
I'm just quietly laughing to myself. The R motion that you made when you said mimeograph just made me laugh a little bit, because it's been a long time since I've seen one or turned the handle.
That was, one of the requirements when you're doing student teaching is learning how to do a mimeograph.
A couple of questions I have. Jill brought up the, you know, not purchasing some smartboards in our current budget. Another thing we decided to postpone was some new textbooks for the foreign language areas, which is a very difficult thing to put off. I'm thinking about, you know, as you say, you know, the classroom has changed little compared to the rest of the world around us. And you've spoken, you've actually both spoken about textbooks going away to a certain extent. It seems like with, you mentioned this biology unit that was available through some sort of an exchange to our biology teacher. It seems that maybe there's some savings that we can have in not investing in a set of textbooks, because, you know, really, do we want to have them around?
I can give you a kind of a firsthand experience. When I went back to teaching, since, it's what I studied, I taught Spanish. And so, for the last five years, I've been teaching Spanish classes. And one of the things that I found in the different Spanish textbooks, and I had to do evaluations of textbooks and figure out, okay, what were we going to bring into a school? And most of, well, in two schools, I chose the Glencoe series. And the reason that I chose it was because the textbook was also online, the workbooks were online, I had collateral material. So, using the smartboard, for example, when I introduced vocabulary for a new chapter, I had an interactive chalkboard that I worked with on the smartboard. It had voice, so it wasn't just my voice pronouncing the words in Spanish, had all of the illustrations, it had video embedded, et cetera. And I think with a lot of the textbook companies, because they realize that, you know, investing in textbooks, very expensive. It's also the fact that I don't have a student in any of my classes that doesn't have Internet access from home right now. Now, granted, there may be some, or some that can't get to the library, or some that can't stay after school and get access, but that's pretty much a norm nowadays. And my kids in Spanish class, they never had any excuse. I couldn't do the worksheet? Oh, I'm sorry, you have Internet access. The worksheet was online. You know, you don't get away without one.
So, the dog couldn't eat it, is what you're saying.
Yeah, that's it. That's it. So, I would definitely, you know, hold the textbook maker, you know, granted, you have to have the technology available to you to be able to have the kids access the material. But I think textbooks, you know, I used everything online. I put it up on the smartboard. I didn't need the textbook.
And you have to recall, remember that there are different style learners, too, that some might be more apt to learn from that sort of presentation versus quietly sitting with a book. So, you need to be cognizant of that. I'm curious, what, you know, we've got staff development, certainly, that happens, but what are we doing to help promote the use of some of these technologies by some of the more veteran teachers who didn't come out of school or didn't have the opportunities to work with a smartboard in another environment?
One of the things we do, I've got a sign up, I work out of the computer lab on the second floor, and so, teachers will come into the lab. And it's kind of, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but I kind of feel like they come in there, and it's a safe environment. They've got somebody there that can help them through whatever they run into, and can help the kids if they get stuck. And that's kind of the environment. I'd like to spend more time in other teachers' classrooms where they're using the technology. But it's a collaborative effort. When I was installing hospital systems, it was train the trainer, because you couldn't train every individual nurse in the hospital how to use a clinical system. So, you trained key people, and then they went out and trained. And I think the same thing's happening with, for example, Fab's using, Mr. Fabiano is using a smartboard in his classroom, and it's like the enthusiasm from him, now his colleagues in the other rooms, and, oh, yeah, how do you do this? And it's growing from that point. I've had some, didn't go over real real well, but usually, my lunch hours, hours, my lunch minutes, anyway, invite teachers to come in and use the technology. I like to see that become a little bit more formal, but some of the teachers are fighting with time. I don't see a lot of resistance from the veterans. You know, if it's available, they're going to use it, and I think they feel like it's a comfortable environment. I haven't had anybody, you know, push back at all.
I'd like to make a comment for the veteran teachers out there. Having been a technology coordinator just for a year, and just being a newer teacher who came in with technology kind of as the only thing I did know, and wanting to help the other teachers so that they would maybe help me survive all the other things I had to do. I actually found the veteran teachers were the first ones to step up to learn the technology, because the newer teachers, although a lot of them are now required to come in with technology, were very overwhelmed with all that they had to learn. And the veteran teachers were actually the first ones to step up in all the experiences I've had to really get.
How many years has Mr. Fabiano been teaching?
I don't know, let's see, he's older, Derek. I think about 35, 30, 35.
He's probably one of the most enthusiastic users of the technology. Put a smartboard in his room, wow, look at what I could do. And I see that out of a lot of the teachers. I don't see the, any pushback. They're real smart people.
It's interesting, similar experiences, Jill, that you've outlined. I know at the university, when we first had the infusion of technology, it was senior professors that stepped up, and it may be because they felt secure enough to do that, or it was a matter of returning something back to the pot. Embrace that technology. So, you know, the stereotypical view of someone who hadn't been raised with that tool would never touch it was inverted.
I shared a room for a couple of years with a Latin teacher, and he had been teaching for 40-something years. And everybody said, oh, you know, Jack's computer phobic, and you'll never. By the end of the two years, he was, his kids were playing games on the Internet. There was a nice one where you fling the teacher, and you had to answer the questions correctly, and then you built the trebuchet, and you had to answer them all correctly. The trebuchet got built, and you created your own teacher, and you put the name on him. And then, you know, Mr. Kelly would get in the trebuchet online there, and it would fling them across, and they skidded and so forth. And there's a guy that everybody else had, he's computer phobic, he'll never learn, and he admitted he was a little bit, you know, nervous at first, but he just needed a coach. It's just like the kids need a coach.
I have another, I have a question. Could you just explain, from my understanding, I know your role is to obviously teach some of the basic computer skill classes to the junior high students? Because I know they need to have that knowledge in order to take certain classes in high school. And then, you're also the data management, so that means that you will look at some of the different tests, testing that goes on, and kind of accumulate the data and bring it together so people can analyze it. But on top of that, obviously, you've stepped up and are doing a lot of supporting of the teachers with the technology integration. Do you feel it would be important to have maybe a technology integration person who can go into the classrooms and do that along with this data management person and the classes that you're teaching? Obviously, you're handling the whole bunch.
I'd love to be able to do that. I'd like to write some grants, too, but time is the...
No, I understand. But I just wanted the people that are watching to know that, what your role is, too, because I don't know if they know, you know, who you are.
Yeah. To me, that's, out of all the things I do, I love teaching, and I love the kids that I have. They're really great. But I also love seeing the teachers just grasp that, and you kind of see the sparkle on their eye, and they say, oh, wow, do you see what I did? And I look in on some of the classrooms, like Linda Albright's across the hall from me, and I'll watch her doing something on the smartboard there, and she just, you know, she's in her glory. So, that, to me, is a lot of fun. I would love to spend a lot more time doing the integration aspect of this.
I guess my question, I guess my point is that there is no technology integration position really at the junior, senior high.
Not per se.
Per se, there really is a, okay, so, that's something that we need to think about when we're making decisions.
And the other half of the story, and we certainly, I think, should hear this as well in the future, want to hear all the good things, and I want you to hear all the good things that are happening in the elementary building. And some would say, this is the critical time for that infusion, maybe more so than at the junior and senior high school level. So, at a future meeting, I would like Deb to come in and explain a lot of the initiatives and the familiarity and level of comfort that students possess prior to entering the junior high, high building.
When they get to me, most of them, they know Word, they know PowerPoint. A number of them know some of the Excel things. We're starting to do some formulas today with my seventh grade class. But a lot of the basics, or, you know, lion's share of the basics, they've covered already in elementary school.
Yes.
And now, we're working on refining those skills and applying them to, you know, how do I do a research paper? How do I do, you know, solve problems in math? How do I put a business plan together? How do you do other things? So, they're taking the next step. But they're getting a real good background from the elementary school.
Makes all the difference in the world, just this, you know, all the research shows that if you can begin the introduction of language and foreign languages in the primary grades, it's a wonderful springboard for success in the future. And that, thanks to Deb and others in that building, are preparing that groundwork for future success.
Any other questions for Mr. Clark?
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for coming.
Thank you. David.
Sometime, come on up to room 223, and you can see some demonstrations sometime.
What time is your lunch?
Anytime I take it. It's not when I'm not teaching, so.
Minute or three.
Anytime. I'd be happy to show off some of the things that we're doing.
Perfect. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion of the, where we are with the Darrell Drive property piece?
Yes. And again, this is the desire to secure an easement in the property, open space in back of the elementary school. At our last meeting, we discussed having the Dussett Survey Firm come in and put stakes in at the corners of the property that we're considering in trying to secure that easement. And they are going to do that. We also talked about having an informal information opportunity available on January 17th. Maybe the morning of January 17th, being available for any questions that might come up for individuals that have observed the staking out of that property. And subsequent to that, at the next board meeting, having an opportunity for citizens of New America to ask any questions relative to the ultimate easement that we hope to secure. We talked about having the surveyor present, the attorney that is helping us with... We talked about having the surveyor present, the attorney that is helping us with the easement. Potentially someone from the town. Ed, the town administrator, might be available. And being able to address any questions or concerns or suggestions that might occur subsequent even to the 17th date. So it's a, again, just a matter of speaking with you again to see if we're ready to do that. If we can get some volunteers that'll be present the morning of the 17th. It's a Saturday morning that we discussed, to be available in the event that questions do arise.
What time, Mark?
Well, you know, I think we should discuss that. I would think maybe between nine and noon, something like that.
I think that's a great idea. It'll be a good, good opportunity to kind of get a sense of the community and hopefully be the last big step in putting this behind us, getting this done.
I believe it will be. And what we're doing in particular is sending out notification to the, not just the abutters of the property, but the residents of the Durrell Estates. So everyone in the area. We have the labels ready to go. We'll send out a brief information sheet encouraging them to attend.
Super.
So are we all right on the 17th, nine to noon?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, whoever's available.
I'll be there.
I'll be there. Not that I can answer a whole lot of questions about the land, but I'll be there.
So as far as the mechanics of that goes, we'll probably need to post that then, right? Given there'll be.
It would not.
Form of board members.
It would not hurt to post it.
Post it as a work session.
Yes, a workshop session.
Are we the only people that are going to be there on Saturday? Or did you say that the other people that would be at our meeting will be there also?
It would be the board members and myself at this point. Yeah, I can talk to Steve to see if he might be available for a portion of the time. The questions in particular will probably center around land, topography, that type of thing. So it would not hurt to have someone, a representative from the surveying firm.
Will the stakes be in the ground by then?
Yes.
So we could walk it?
Yes.
Bring your boots.
Bring the boots, good, good.
It might be helpful, whatever letter that you sent to, oh, sorry, that you sent to the Durrell residents is maybe give it to.
Nate?
Yeah, reporters or, you know, just to know that that's going on that day, that, you know, if reporters want to come and see the land, see what's going on, listen, you know, hear what people are talking about or whatever, just.
So this is the 17th, you want to do this?
Yes.
Okay, and it's like a site walk or something?
Well, that and, you know, a type of meet and greet where we will answer questions, attempt to answer questions or take notes on answers that we will provide in the future relative to the securing of the easement.
Okay, okay, I don't know anything about the history of this project or anything like that. So someone's going to have to give me the whole scoop.
Please call me.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes.
The nutshell is, if you're asking, I'm sure others that are listening or watching are interested is there's, when the Durrell Woods subdivision was put in, there was a parcel of land that was set aside as open space.
Okay.
Deeded in that was information that the space could be used for town and/or school purposes. That was discovered by a prior board member, I think, five-ish years ago. And we've been on a very slow march towards realizing that where the elementary school has space needs and that we can satisfy the playfield needs and as well as community needs for more open space for recreational activities with such a property. And it would be, the cost of the property essentially is going to be the cost of the legalities of obtaining the easement.
That's correct.
And it's important to know that we are not contemplating, discussing, or thinking about putting any permanent structures or any structures on that property. This would be playing fields. We're not looking at expanding the footprint of the building or putting any building out there. So it's the notion somewhere down the road, when possible, when possible fiscally, to have an opportunity of a little more functional green space for kids to play on.
Sure, okay. Well, thanks, now I don't need to go.
You don't need to go, but, you know, it's a great thing to show up on a calendar where people can read about it online or in print somewhere.
I'll write something, I'll make a notice of the date.
Thank you, right.
And all residents of the town are invited. It's not just those from the subdivision. Certainly, we welcome everyone's participation.
Yes, thanks for adding that clarification. Okay, so we continue on that slow march, but at least we'll be really, we'll be out in the woods. I'm curious to see where those stakes actually are as well.
I am as well.
Put it around those woods a little bit. It'll be fun through all of the downed branches and whatnot from the recent ice.
Well, bring our snowshoes, right?
Okay, on to committee reports. Unfortunately, Jim Bergeron is at a conservation commission meeting this evening, so he is unable to attend. Which brings us to superintendent's report.
Well, I had the good fortune this evening to be able to attend a gathering, new year gathering of the Newmarket Durham Business Association. And, you know, was introduced informally to a number of individuals. Few invitations have been extended, in particular, by a state representative at our legislature to address some concerns related to schools, fiscal issues, academic programming issues, and, you know, demographics in the state. So I welcome that opportunity and will be speaking with as many legislators as I can. Also, I had the opportunity to meet many business persons. And I've offered certainly the team here at Newmarket as potential speakers at any of their functions. We do want to get the word out. I know we all will embrace and look forward to an opportunity to speak about the good things happening in our buildings. So Nancy Wood, who provided that opportunity, invited me and provided introductions. And I want to express my gratitude for that.
Excuse me, Mark, is this a new business association? Has this always been?
I think Sue, you've participated in some of the sessions as well.
I belong to the association, but unfortunately, their meetings are always on Thursday, right before a board meeting, so.
But, you know, my first impression, it's a very supportive group and some great allies for the children in both Durham and, you know, the Oyster River District and in Newmarket. A event that I, or issue that I wanted to discuss is some water damage that we had at the high school this last week. Sue and I went over and did speak with custodial staff. And I did speak with those that are attempting to fix the roof. And I believe Sue, it's in the area that was most recently repaired, by the chimney, by that art room again, where there was some water damage. A flashing raised. Water did infiltrate the building. A partial ceiling collapsed in one of the classrooms. And we have our insurance carriers in there and we'll have that repaired with all due haste. And I did notice on the first floor as well, some damage to tiles in the art room. Also, called the other day, and a heating pipe that is probably eighty years old under some hardwood flooring is leaking and the floor has buckled. So we're having to address that. What I do see is certainly a tired aging facility that seems to be fraught with instances of, you know, having to put a Band-Aid on and not curing an overall illness. So I don't mean to be too dramatic in this, but it is certainly disturbing when I go in there and I see how these things have occurred, are occurring. And you feel like the boy with his finger in the dyke, or fingers in the dyke, trying to prevent leaks, literally. Sue, was there anything you want to add to it? I know.
Pretty much sums it up.
Obviously, nobody was at the school at the time of the leaking, or was that?
No, we think, from what we gather, on Friday, I believe, Mr. Andruski was there. And he usually walks through all of the classrooms. He didn't notice anything and it wasn't actually until Monday morning when we found the ceiling on the floor.
And you're saying that this is in an area of the building where the roof needs to be repaired or has been repaired?
Well, we had, as you recall, we had the leaking problem in the foreign language and that was a drain issue. And you authorized us to dig the drain down across the parking lot. The driveway we share with the Lamprey Health, we had to put that drain. So it's a combination of a couple of things. That roof, when the water puddles up, it goes to the drains on each end. And if they're clogged, of course, there's too much there. That was the first incident we had when it came through the English classroom and down through the French room. Then now, we thought we had it resolved, but what has happened is the chimney that was replaced in ninety-eight, the flashing on that chimney, it found its way down that chimney into that classroom. You know, water always has a way of finding a way into the building, if it's not, you know, secure. That roof over there is probably one of the newer roofs, I think it was ninety-two. And Cliff, I think you asked me, when is that scheduled in the five-year plan? That's one of the last ones because it is one of the newer ones. But unfortunately, that's.
But it sounds like it wasn't the roof per se leaking in either case.
Right, it wasn't, correct.
The drains were not working, therefore the water raised and it found the.
The flashing, right, to go down through.
We believe that's a plausible explanation for what occurred. And certainly, as they repair this, we hope to have a concrete analysis of what did occur and what we hope will not occur.
So are those, so there's the English room upstairs there on the end. That's, is that, can that room be used at this point in time or?
No.
So we're down a classroom.
We're hoping that there'll be work completed during weekends, hopefully.
They're supposed to be in there tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, they'll be in there to try to fix that room.
So we know we're down the classroom and we certainly want to get that classroom online in a hurry.
We don't have many spare classrooms.
We do not.
We do not have one in a couple of periods, yeah. There are no extra classrooms, so they're using the computer lab, I think. Which displaces the students who want to use the computer lab at this point. So that is, we do want to get that room fixed soon.
And is, you mentioned the leaking heating pipe downstairs, is that affecting teaching space as well?
It is not, it's in the hallway. But it is something we'll have to address because the system itself could be compromised because of that. So that is being resolved as well.
Well, from a couple of levels, it sounds like there might be a trip hazard potential there as well as if you've got ongoing moisture penetration in the building, you start talking about mold and other indoor air quality concerns.
You're correct, Cliff.
We want to take care of that straight away.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
That is the end of the superintendent's report.
That's plenty, I think. Sean, do you have some things for us today?
Yeah, a few things. I was notified by Mr. Andruski this morning that one of the events, the school events that was unfortunately postponed from the ice storm was, is going to be rescheduled. There was a charity basketball game set up by the high school student council between Epping and Newmarket Town employees. We got a lot of local donations from local businesses. And we are going to be trying to reschedule that for, I believe it's going to be a Saturday night in February. They're not sure the specific date yet, but he wanted me to inform you that that will be taking place next month at some point. The last day of school before holiday break, which was the twenty-third, at the end of the day, there was an assembly, I believe I told the board about it, of a New Hampshire band called Recycle Percussion. And the reaction, or the reaction from the student body as well as the staff has been very positive. I've heard countless kids say that was one of the coolest assemblies they've ever seen at school. So regardless of whether or not that's your musical taste, I think everybody enjoyed it. And I think this year, there's, that's just one of the examples of how the school spirit and the morale among the student body seems to be improving, at least in my eyes. So I thought that was a very enjoyable and helpful assembly and a good way to kick off vacation. So the students really liked that. A big event that the high school student council is currently promoting is the Penguin Plunge, which is sponsored by the New Hampshire Special Olympics. It's a fundraiser for them. It's Saturday, I believe, January thirty-first at Hampton Beach. And three of our high school students, two seniors and a junior, as well as John Bridle, the student council advisor are going to be, are, they're raising donations and they will be participating in that event. And they just wanted me to put it out there that for anyone, anyone's welcome to donate to them. I believe they need to raise a minimum of three hundred or four hundred dollars. And you can email, or email, mail donations to the school, care of the student council, or I believe there's a box of some sort to drop them in, in the main office. And Mr. Andruski has also stated that if at least a thousand dollars is raised, he will participate in it as well. And he wants to let me know, let you guys know about that. And then one final inquiry from the senior class, I was asked this morning to look into it with the school board. The snow day policy, the unofficial graduation date at this time, as far as we're concerned, official date hasn't been approved yet, but it's June twelfth. And it appears as if that was scheduled with three snow days built in that we wouldn't have to make up. And there's just growing, can't think of the word, growing concern from the senior class student body. If there's more snow days, we'll either have to push graduation back or go to hold Saturday school for however many Saturdays we need in April. So I was just asked by Mr. Bridle, the senior class advisor, to ask. There's some, no one really knows a concrete answer for the, if the state of emergency actually took place during the ice storm. Some people think there's a policy of it's at the school board's discretion whether or not those days are made up. So they just wanted me to bring, or just ask you if I might be able to relay some information back to them just because there's, no one's really sure what the deal is with that, if that makes sense?
It does, and superintendents aren't sure either. So many in the state are asking the same question. I do know there aren't blanket waivers that are being granted by the commissioner of education. And certainly, the department of education will approach this as requests come in. And it varies from state to state. And oftentimes, there is a, where snow days are an issue and we've had adverse weather conditions, exceptions made for graduating seniors. So we're all cognizant of the concern and share the concern. So as I hear things, we will convey those things to you as well.
Okay.
Where do we stand right now?
Three days.
Three days. We've used three days?
We were scheduled for, is it the seventeenth to get out? So that puts us into the next week, actually, right?
So the seniors, right now, they've used up as many days as they can and more will need to be made up or waived?
Basically, it looks like if there's, we're trying to set it for June twelfth. If there's one or two extra snow days, we'll probably hold Saturday schools in, they're usually held in April. If there's more than that, we may have to push it back a week. So that's what the concern is at this point in time.
And because of, again, the severity of the ice storm, who knows at this point what suggestions will be made? And there's a range of possibilities, I know. And having dealt with this last year where there was a significant. And having dealt with this last year, where there was a significant snow in Maine, a combination of waivers, some extended school days, Saturday classes, and a tweaking of workshop days, teacher workshop days, using those as a student day were considered.
I think it's important to keep in mind that you really can't address the question now, because you can't have an answer until you have your totality of days you've missed. Some of the districts around the state that were closed for the better part of twenty days after the ice storm, they're in a much different situation, we're at three. It's about reasonableness. If we end up with, let's say we end up with five total, two of which were the ice storm, it would not be reasonable, I do not believe, in the eyes of the state, of Commissioner of Education, to waive those two days for Newmarket if we have a total of five.
Correct.
If we end up with a total of nine or ten, then it may be reasonable to request a waiver of those two disaster days, for lack of a better word. So you really can't know now until you get into that early springtime where you're reasonably sure you're done with snow days. And then we get to Mother's Day, and we all know what happens on Mother's Day, the rivers rise. So you just never know.
Well, it's a good point, Forrest, you don't. And we don't know until all is said and done with adverse weather circumstances. What we do know, and certainly what the compass always points to, is safety. And as much as it may be uncomfortable, I do know in June, generally, the roads are passable. We don't have freezing, and quite frequently, there's sun. And the students will be safe if we end up having to go a day or two more in June. So at this point, as much as certainly I understand the angst, the concern it causes, my overarching concern, and any superintendent dealing with this, is how do we keep people safe?
The only other comment, I guess I have, is just to reflect back on years past when we've had the Mother's Day flood and whatnot, where the board has made recommendations to petition, for lack of a better word, the commissioner, and the Commissioner of Education has been amenable to changing what the requirements are. So I think, you know, the reasonableness, I think, is, but, you know, long-range weather forecasting is not what any of us can hang our hat on right now. We share your concern.
Yep, we do, we're with you.
Thanks for bringing that up, that's, in some ways, fun to think about at this point. You're not getting senioritis yet, are you?
I know.
No comment.
I plead the fifth.
Okay. Is there any correspondence of note this evening?
I did email you, and I did bring a copy of a letter of support from the Business and Computer Education Department, and Gene Burke in particular, relative to good things that are happening in buildings relative to the integration of technology. So I did want to bring that to your attention. Oftentimes, we hear of challenges associated with technology, but I think Newmarket is very fortunate to have both Deb and David available to provide concrete support in our buildings.
Definitely, this, receiving this was a great preamble to David's presentation tonight, too, where it's a good discussion of how Moodle's being used and what's happening with technology integration, and the enthusiasm that seems to be spreading.
It is, throughout the district, it is.
Terrific. Okay. Onto... Okay. On then to the Business Department update and our warrant articles. Unless there's anything else you want to start with?
No, no, I jump right in. Our public hearing is next Wednesday, and these are the warrant articles that we discussed with the Budget Committee. They didn't really have any, recommend any changes, so I believe this is what we're going to go forward with. One of the things that I had done on just the first item, Article One, and I mentioned it to the Budget Committee, it can only be there for the public hearing and the deliberative session, is to just put a little narrative about what it means. And Brian Hart brought that to my attention, cross off the estimated tax impact, that's not correct. I wouldn't put that on there. And I also wondered if you wanted to do that with the other articles, just for the public hearing, as a handout, put a little explanation, so that as people, I mean, typically, what we do at the public hearing is you give everyone a copy of them, and then if we had a little explanation, that might clear up a few questions. I don't know, I'm open to your suggestions on that.
I guess if we can provide clarifying language, you know, the language of the warrant articles is not poetry, in my perspective. It's very prescriptive, and the raise and appropriate, and whatever other language. If we can provide nuggets there that help understanding, I think that's great. Otherwise, I think we need to provide some other additional handout.
Right.
So if we can
Translate it.
Align things together, I think that might be the best approach.
I agree, that does need some explanation, because I had a question about, when I was reading the Article Two and Article Three, which are about putting surplus, any surplus monies into reserve, the way that it sounds is like we're raising more money on top of the budget, and I didn't know if we could even change the wording to, because it says, for example, Article Two says, "To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars of any June thirtieth, two thousand nine fund balance surplus to be added to the capital reserve fund." I just wonder if you could just say, "To see if the school district will vote to appropriate."
No, unfortunately, that one, that one is very prescriptive.
Having gotten some feedback from DRA, they asked us specifically to insert the words "raise and."
Really?
Yeah.
Even though we're not really raising money, we're just taking leftover money and being fiscally responsible, it sounds like we're asking for additional money, that's, so I think it would be nice to clarify.
Yeah, it is prescriptive, and in an indirect way, we are, in that that money will not be returned, it is used for a specific purpose, and that's why it's so prescriptive. But there is very little, there is no latitude, no discretion, no explanation that we can provide as it appears in the end.
On the ballot.
On the ballot, other than what we're handed. And oftentimes, we, you know, have this go-around with attorneys, and, you know, we get our wrist slap, "No, no, no, don't do it, you will compromise the process."
Because sometimes it's viewed that you're expressing an opinion, if you're just putting an explanation. So they just like you to leave it basic.
So maybe what Cliff's chairperson, Chase, is suggesting, we could add some information in about maybe how long we've had some of the reserves and why, what we, you know, why we, you know, have these reserves or whatever, so that people understand that it's something that they voted on before, it's not something new, and just provide that information, I agree with that.
Okay, so for Article Number Two, I did just start to draft something that might say, "This fund was established in two thousand and four to set aside funds for unanticipated student needs. The current balance is approximately one hundred and sixty-five thousand. The intended cap is two hundred and fifty thousand." I don't know if you wanted to say anything about your limit this year?
Yeah, and also, do you want to say this won't have an impact?
Will have no tax impact, it'll come from surplus, yes. Did you want to state anything about your limit? Because in the past, you've always said "up to," or just leave it and discuss that if that comes up. Yeah, it might be a little confusing.
Yeah, I think that's succinct, I like that.
Okay. And I can do the same for Number Three. And then Number Four is the one that may be confusing, because our default is the same as our operating. So how would you want to explain that one?
And that's important, as brought to light by the Budget Committee, who, I think, most of the discussion about the budget article at that last meeting, uncharacteristically, was, that that's a little bit confusing because of the note, both numbers are the same. And in fact, in the letter back from DRA, they thought that maybe we had a typo.
Right, they did. It's unusual, it's unusual, but it's allowed, so.
So I think it's critical that we have a note on that.
Okay.
How it reads is, do you have a draft on that?
No, I started with something like, something to the extent of maybe stating that the board felt that in this economic situation, that they would...
Due to the current economic climate, you know, the school board is recommending that we keep the...
That we limit spending to the default? If it gets long, it'll get...
Right, that's, yeah.
And a zero percent tax impact, right?
I was just going to say you might want to align that. This amount represents a zero, you know, zero increase in the tax rate. Because that's really where our lack of increase is, it's not in the budget.
It's in the tax rate.
In the tax rate.
So ultimately, what we're really asking for is for people to support the same funds they provided last year.
And more.
With these certain obligations and commitments that we've...
Such as our negotiations...
Oh, no, I understand, the contracted, right.
We are asking for more.
Okay.
Dollar amount.
By the way, we're offsetting it with our own revenue, additional revenue, so it still is a zero impact. But ultimately, besides that small percentage that we're asking for, we're really just looking for people to think about whether they want to fund that roof. Really?
Yes.
So let me just think, okay, so due to the current economic climate, the school board is recommending that, is recommending that we limit spending to the default budget. This will have no tax impact on the tax rate. What else did you say?
I think the fact that it's one page is also very positive and helpful.
Right, we get it all on one page.
These notes may not be though.
No, I think we can, because we have some room here, I think we can. That's why I'm trying to make them just a couple of sentences, to keep them brief.
Really, we can talk about it.
Yes.
Right.
What I can do is I can have it, put this together and email it to everyone, just in case you see something you want changed before the public hearing, and also the Budget Committee, so they'll know, that's what we're going to put out there. That's...
Good.
Is that okay?
Sounds good. Rather than spending the time finalizing the wordsmithing at this point. So again, could you read, though, what you have there so far?
On this last one, it's a little awkward, so I just jotted down, "Due to the current economic climate, the school board is recommending that we limit spending to the default budget. This will have no impact on the tax rate, this amount, this budget, operating budget."
Can we change "recommending" to "proposing"?
Mm-hmm, sure. Good idea.
Basically, what it does, provides that there will be no incremental impact, increase in that tax rate, that it has zero impact, but there is no increment. Ultimately, it all has an impact, the dollar amount has an impact.
No increase?
Right.
Is that good? "Due to the current economic climate, the school board is proposing that we limit spending to the default budget. This operating budget will have no increase, will have no increase," that doesn't sound right. "Will not increase the tax rate."
Correct.
Will not.
Correct, that's it.
Does the, any discussion of the elevator? Is that something that would be discussed at that public hearing also? Because obviously, it's not going to be in writing. How do people find out about that besides watching our meetings?
We talked about it with the Budget Committee on Tuesday. When I figured it out, if, basically what that is, is, I think Brian Hart mentioned it's really a revenue, because that money comes back to us. So we limited the funds that go to the surplus to make sure that we do in fact have that revenue at the end of the year, because obviously, that money goes into fund balance, so that's one of the reasons we didn't want to add more to those funds if we didn't have it. So that goes, all of that is intended to go back to the town, and for the most part, we're sure that that will happen.
I think it's a good point, I don't think the redundancy will hurt. Because, you know, that question may come up, and, you know, it's another opportunity to get the message out.
And just bringing that up, I think we need to be not only prepared to explain the roof, but I think we also need to be prepared to answer thoroughly the elevator question, as to the process we went through a little bit, too.
Because ultimately, when I did some figuring today, when you figure in the roof and then you add the surplus from the elevator, it's a wash. I mean, actually saves you, you know, it kind of replaces, by having that roof in there, you're utilizing that money to move forward in another year, so you're, again, planning for your repairs.
And I think people, I think if we can explain clearly what happened in the process with the elevator, going forward with the roof, that there'd be that confidence there, that, okay, okay, we understand what the process was, and we feel confident that the roof is important, too.
Right. Was there a suggestion, I think, Mark, that you perhaps would explain that, maybe in some sort of televised message that was mentioned by the Budget Committee?
Yeah, you know, and I think at some point, it would be helpful for Sue, Cliff, myself, yes, representatives of the team, to present via Channel Thirteen, something similar to apparently what Ed is going to present, a short snippet, and what's occurring with the budget. And, yeah, go ahead.
Is Ed already doing that? I mean, I was under the impression, I don't, ask the administrator, yeah, that's the format they were suggesting.
So that's the type of format.
Before the deliberative session.
But I think it would be helpful, certainly Forrest, you have a lot of perspective to share on that, having been through that process, so, you know, it would be good for, minimally, I think, at least three of us to be present, to do that preparation for thirteen.
And I think there could be some, we should be particularly mindful of questions that are asked at the public hearing as for things that should be answered in that form.
Right. Because they probably will be common questions and concerns.
Yes.
And who would do that?
Pardon me?
How would we make that, who would do the taping and all of that? I'm just talking out loud, I'm just...
Well, we'll talk to Ed to find out what mechanics have been in.
Okay, how do we make that happen?
Yes.
In a similar way we did the one, the one I did a couple of years ago.
Yeah, you did one, right?
I did one, I sit into the table, and they just use that camera from the corner.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So it actually could be done here, right on the dais, it could be filmed from the base, right on the cameras.
You could also hire that band that played at the high school and have them open it up and catch some attention and then do it.
Okay. So is there anything else regarding that verbiage or comments on the warrant that need to be made now?
Is there any other information you would like us to provide at the public hearing? I mean, in the past, we've been, right, we've had more on our warrants, but really, this is it, pretty much.
Really, just your spreadsheet that you do, the...
I usually do that deliberative session, because this is your more asking, right. I looked back at what we had provided in the past at public hearing, and a lot of it was around the land and the building, because that was a focus. But as far as the budget, we just gave them the warrants.
It might be, first, we were speaking of it, I think, walking on Tuesday evening out of the building, that it might be good to have some sort of a visual on, okay, the, that better describes the fact that the budget's actually increasing, however, there's no increase in the tax base. If there's some way we can capture that visually, that might, that might be very helpful.
If we take last year's budget.
Operating budget.
Tax rate.
Yep.
This year's requested budget, which shows the increase.
The dollar amounts.
A dollar increase, tax rate. Tax rate shows it flat or down one cent as it...
Yes.
Is currently represented. I mean, it just could be that simple. Those, those four boxes, that really lets it be seen.
Mm-hmm. Concise.
The other thing that we talked about was having a, um, y, y, you know, showing that piece of the budget that is not fixed, that is not contractual. You know, we, we talked about the, the piece of the budget that, that we do, that we, th- there's only a, a small piece of the budget that we can do anything with anyway, that we could...
How much of it is discretionary spending?
Right. So... The pie chart?
I, yes, but I'm wondering if it's, I'm wondering if it gets a little too...
That was really more for the Budget Committee.
Yeah, that was the Budget Committee. I think they wanted to understand that, and that was important. Um, I think we need to keep ourselves for this next stage, just real succinct. We can answer that question if it comes up, um, but I hesitate to throw another number in there.
Yeah.
Sue, I think the important thing I see is, is that elevator as a revenue can be confusing to the people. Make sure that is explained to them.
Tough concept.
Yes.
It is tough concept, yeah.
Okay, anything else on the public hearing? Okay.
That's next Wednesday at seven, six?
Correct. Seven, in the auditorium.
Okay, manifest?
You do have a manifest?
We make a motion, we approve all the presented manifests in a total of 1,327,847.89.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Calendar. Which, um, thank you, Jill, for just mentioning, the public hearing is next Wednesday in the auditorium downstairs at 7:00 PM.
And that's the Budget Committee's public hearing.
That's right.
That's correct.
That's not to be confused with the deliberative session.
Right.
Or the, the February date.
The, although I, recalling, um, some confusion on the posting of maybe a Budget Committee meeting earlier in the season, can we check to make sure?
We've posted this already.
We've been posting it.
We posted this one already. We did.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the duplication doesn't hurt.
Right. And pardon my duplicate redundancy. Saturday, they're following, on the 17th, nine till noon, uh, will be a, a walk of the, um, of that open space, um, between the elementary school and the Darrell Woods loop there. Where will we congregate? The elementary school parking lot, or...
Library.
I would, yeah, I think library's right, Chad. I, it's a good idea.
Okay.
And again, we'll make sure that is posted. And we'll, I'm sure Annette's listening, or will be, so we'll take care of that.
Okay. And then, at our next school board meeting on the 22nd, we will hopefully have representatives, perhaps our attorney, someone from the surveyor's office, and perhaps some folks from the community that might have questions regarding that process. Okay.
Were you gonna, excuse me, were you gonna do that meeting early originally? Why don't you talking about changing the time?
I think we're doing a six o'clock business meeting, and then a seven o'clock...
Yep.
Um, discussion of the elementary.
Uh, I'll make the appropriate calls tomorrow, be sure we can have as many people as possible there.
Great. And the Penguin Plunge is on the 31st. Hopefully, it will be, um, warm enough for those folks.
What are they raising money for?
Special Olympics.
Special Olympics.
February the 3rd is the deliberative session. That's our meeting, uh, which is again in the auditorium downstairs, 7:00 PM. Then our first meeting of February is on the 5th. Any other items of note?
I just realized something I didn't mention in the student report. We just started this week, senior class just started advertising our newest fundraising move. On the 29th, which is a Thursday of this month, um, I'm sure you've all seen, "Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader?" We're gonna be doing a live in the gym, um, "Are You Smarter Than an NHS Senior?" So, uh, everyone's invited, and then, um, everyone that goes gets a ticket when they go in the door, and then it's gonna be random drawing for contestants, and you see if you're smarter than us, so, spread the word.
Who writes the questions?
Um, I believe every teacher's being asked to submit four questions from their midterm to be used as questions, is what I was told, so...
Sounds a little bit scary.
Yeah. I think I'll, uh, hold on to my ticket.
Okay. Enrollment report.
I, I can answer that question. No. No, I'm not.
No, um, the grand trend I'm seeing is, uh, pretty stable numbers.
Pretty stable.
All right, anything else before we, uh, move along? We do have, um, me this evening to speak briefly of, uh, personnel matter in non-public session. Anything else before then? Okay, then I entertain a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, for personnel reasons.
So moved.
Thank you, Chad.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.